I'd like to call the Bremen High School District 228 Regular Board Meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, July fifteenth, the time is seven p.m. We will call this.
Mrs. Lisbon here. Mrs. List here. Ms. Watt here. Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Ms. Solis here. Mr. Whitcomb.
Here.
This is Russell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item two, board member approval. Can I get a motion to approve the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five regular and closed meeting minutes?
No.
Through Ms. Gleason, sent by Mr. Patterson. Questions? Go ahead, please.
Mrs. Gleason? Aye. Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Mrs. List? Aye. Ms. Watt? Ms. Solis? Aye. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
I get a motion to approve the July eighth, twenty twenty-five community and closed meeting minutes.
No.
Sent by Ms. Gleason, sent by Mr. Patterson. Questions? Go ahead.
Mrs. Gleason? Aye. Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Mrs. List? Aye. Ms. Watt? Aye. Ms. Solis? Aye. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Moving on to item three, communications, comments from the public. Do we have any public comments? There are no most public comment. Moving on to reports. Item four point one, superintendent report, Dr. Sperch.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. Start out by thanking Dr. Rozinski and Mr. Me from a good community partners. If you didn't get a chance to preview the email I sent earlier today, we did host the Cook County Department of Transportation and High- Highways. They are looking into doing a project, the Pulaski Road Corridor Study. They had some information out there today for the public, and they were very complimentary about Bremen being a host and supporting that effort. So we, of course, we keep you updated, happy to supply more space in the future if that project needs it. But just wanted to thank them for their efforts today.
Second item for me, and I want to publicly recognize Yasmin Cheek, our PR specialist, for the light. I've been receiving many compliments, just randomly when I'm out and about at events, but also through email, and I've got a couple of phone calls. So I thought I'd share one as it pertains particularly well to tonight, from one of our residents. And I, and I will quote here, "Happy to report, I received the light on Saturday. The colorful look of the newsletter was appealing and set the tone for the uplifting news to come. It is clear that Bremen has been so responsive to the evolving need of students. I so appreciate how Bremen values go beyond the academic accomplishments that one would expect from a high school experience. It is clear that the Bremen experience embraces all kinds of skills and learning opportunities that reflect the changing times in which we all live and which we also contribute to good citizenship." Really couldn't help but feel that the diversity of the Bremen opportunities allowed for more inclusiveness for students so that they can pursue their own special interests. She thanked us for sending her the newsletter, but I thought it was important to just thank her for taking the time to write us. We don't always get those types of emails, and it was pretty neat to hear and see that directly from a community member that doesn't have students in the district anymore, but was very proud of these accomplishments. I was at Tinley Park Chamber meeting, and the Skills Trade Expo section, along with the Career Pathway, got some press from one of the members in the audience. And it just, you know, expressed how they were so happy that the board has set a direction for all students and the trade expo being one of the most connected employers with our students to hire on the spot. And as perfect timing would have it, which will bring me to my next part of my report, we have someone whose name you've probably heard a bunch, Ms. Renee Mack, who is aggressive for our students in making those connections between the businesses and our students. And she's someone that is always behind the scenes. She doesn't ask or require any credit, but she certainly deserves it. And she's here with us today because of one of our business colleagues, Michael Gonzalez, is here, and I'll bring him up in a minute. Because she's getting honored through their organization for some of the work that she does. So if you don't mind a little break, I'd like to ask Michael Gonzalez and Renee to come on and say a few words about it.
The floor is yours.
Absolutely.
On just on a personal note, if you don't mind, I want to start off, anytime I'm in a room with educators, I'm a parent, I just want to say thank you. You know, I really do appreciate it, and we always appreciate the good work that you do. But I'm with an organization called OAI. We're in Park Forest, Illinois. My name is Mike Gonzalez, I'm the program director there. One of the programs that we have is called Southworks. And I have to tell you, just both personally and professionally, it has been one of the most fulfilling things that I've done with the organization. What Southworks does is it takes high school students and connects them with manufacturing industry and ideas and connections that will help them in the future. Whether they're taking the college path or whether they're not taking that path, what Southworks does is it provides that outlet for these young people to connect and learn about manufacturing opportunities in Illinois. And Renee has been there since the beginning, before me. And really, the work that she's been doing to connect all of these kids. And I'm telling you, when you go there, when you see the kids, you see the impact that it has, it means something. And that's why we want to present with great, great enthusiasm in honor to Renee Mack, our impact guru. Renee, now you want to say a few words?
I will say that, because I love Southworks. I love it because, you know, because they brought many opportunities to our students. You know, the last time they had it, which was April seventeenth, we had our big event at the South River Fieldhouse, a new company came up. And they just met this woman from Acor.
Acord Carton.
Acord Carton. Acord Carton, Cheryl. And she is taking interns. Like, it's those opportunities, just because we show up, the people that work, you guys bring us the great people, we are making opportunities for our kids, and that is super exciting.
Can I, I'm going to-
Go for it.
Just for a second, and again, this is, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'll rag on her a little more, because part of what we try to all do well is respond and service. And when I send her an email, hey, we got a possible lead, they're looking for students or volunteer, they want to connect with us with their workplace experience. I know when I hit that email, she always follows through and discusses with it. And because of that, our students benefit because she serves our community, so much appreciated, and congrats to her. And then finally, if you can believe it, we, well, next time we meet for the regular board meeting, we will be back in session. So just wanted to have all of our stakeholders enjoy their last few weeks, just so that the board is aware. Our institute is Wednesday, August thirteenth, that's for all staff. They start with their departments, and then they travel to their buildings. On eight fourteen, we still provide a freshman-only day. Some of the buildings teach some stuff for transfer students that day as well. And then Friday, August fifteenth, is all students' first day of attendance. So before you know it, the link can be in session. And I don't know about you, but I'm ready to go, summer's, I headed up the summer show. That's all for me, Mr. Whitcomb.
Thank you, Dr. Secora. I'm going to have to item four point two, superintendent's cabinet reports.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. I'm going to continue the good news of our workforce addition. A twenty twenty-five welding graduate from Oak Forest was hired by our industry partner, Donson Machine and Outset, last month. He is currently completing the company's boot camp and will soon move on to the labor department. A twenty twenty-five Bremen graduate from our free apprenticeship program is also at Donson, participating in the boot camp. He will transition to Donson's sister company, Vets Precision, which specializes in precision CNC machining components for the ride of our industries. Donson is very pleased with the progress of these graduates and are excited about their potential. Under our college career pathway endorsements, through the Power Act, our school district, because of our size, is required to offer at least one pathway endorsement, starting with the class of twenty twenty-seven, two endorsements by twenty twenty-nine, and three endorsements by twenty thirty-one. District two twenty-eight is submitting graduates from the class of twenty twenty-five to the state of Illinois as having met all the requirements to earn a pathway endorsement in two different areas. This includes earning at least six college credits, completing a sixty-hour career development experience or internship, as well as being academically ready for post-secondary work. The following students from Bremen have earned the Manufacturing Engineering Technology and Trades endorsement for welding. Jorgan Acevedo, Sadie Benidas, Nicholas Cabral, and Christian Cervantes. The following students have earned the Human and Public Service endorsement for teaching for Bremen High School, Isabella Estrada, from Tinley Park High School, Anna Jorgensen and Nicholas Worth, and from Oak Forest High School, Sydney McEvelly. We look forward to adding more graduates to these endorsements next year, as well as finalizing components for automotive, marketing, and computer software developer pathways. And lastly, I want to share our spring advanced placement results. Our AP students turned out impressive results this year. We added fifty-three more testers, bringing our total number to one thousand twenty, which is about twenty-one percent of our student population. These students took over one thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven exams, two hundred and twenty-nine more than last year, and our overall pass rate was fifty-nine percent. This is up from ten percent last school year. The last time our pass rate was this high was back in twenty twelve. Back then, we had half the number of testers, only five hundred and fifty-nine, and they only took eight hundred and thirty-two exams, so a thousand left to go. I'd like to take a moment to highlight some accomplishments from each building, and also want to share that we added two new courses this year, which accounted for a hundred and nine exams. That was in the area of pre-calculus at Allport Campus and African-American Studies at Hillcrest. Starting with Bremen, the overall pass rate increased from thirty-five percent last year to fifty-four percent this year. Derek Hitt had a hundred percent pass rate for European history, and all students earned a four while the state average was seventy. Myra Martinez had a ninety percent pass rate for Spanish language and culture, which exceeded the state and global pass rate of eighty-five percent. George Charlie had an eighty percent pass rate for pre-calculus, which is equal to the state and global pass rates. For Tinley Park, the overall pass rate increased from sixty-eight percent last year to seventy-five percent this year. Sheila Lorden has a ninety-three percent pass rate for English language and composition, exceeding the global, state and global rates of seventy-seven percent and seventy-four percent respectively. Lee Rozinski has a one hundred percent pass rate in chemistry for the third year in a row. Typically, a junior-senior course, this year he had seven sophomores, all who passed, and two who earned a perfect five. Dan Unik's American history pass rate is eighty-six percent compared to the state and global pass rate of seventy-four percent. Rachel Hans' pre-calculus pass rate was also eighty percent like Bremen. And the team of Renee Youngthor and Eugene Unik, they each had an AP English literature course, their pass rate was eighty-eight percent while the state and global pass rate was seventy-four percent. At Hillcrest, the overall pass rate increased from eighteen percent last year to thirty-one percent this year. Kenya Young has a sixty-five percent pass rate for African-American Studies, with seven students earning a four and one student earning a five in her first year of course. Kamiko Broome has a sixty-eight percent pass rate for English Language, with two students earning a five. And Lauren Osborne has a sixty-eight percent pass rate for pre-calculus, with eight students earning a four. At Oak Forest, the overall pass rate increased from fifty-nine percent to sixty-three percent. Katie Catrano has a ninety-one percent pass rate for English Literature, exceeding the state and global pass rate of seventy-four percent. Eric Mullen has an eighty-three percent pass rate for Psychology, while the state pass rate is seventy-four percent. Maria Ariano's pass rate for Spanish language culture is ninety-five percent, and Jody Poskett's pass rate for, pass rate of American History is seventy-four percent, which compares to the state and global pass rate. We are really pleased with these results and are looking forward to another successful AP year of opportunity.
Top show, top show to follow. In the area of technology and operations at three F P three, first is around student registration. As of today, we've registered over two thousand six hundred students, more than half our total student population. Registration officially opened in early April, and we're continuing our outreach effort for families who have not yet completed the process. Next week, we'll launch another round of messaging to encourage families to register. It's important to note that while registration is fully online, making our process accessible and efficient, that being said, we remain committed to equitable access. Each summer, our main offices assists hundreds of families in person, walking them through the process, whether it's helping them with technology, language needs, or any documents. In the second area is cybersecurity. We've made significant strides this summer, bolstering our cybersecurity infrastructure, mostly through efficient deployment of tools we already have. CrowdStrike Falcon Complete has already been part of our endpoint protection strategy, but we've extended that use by adding identity threat protection and network traffic monitoring. These additions allow us to monitor for identity-based attacks and analyze lateral movement, protecting us and giving us real-time view of potential threats before they cause any issues. We've also rolled out two-factor authentication for all server access. This is added, this added layer of protection helps ensure that even if someone's credentials are compromised, no one can gain access to our curriculum systems and our district remains secure. In addition, we've implemented managed methods which monitors our cloud environment, particularly Google Workspace and email, for sensitive data exposure, phishing, and abnormal behavior. It's a solution that gives us visibility into risks that traditionally fly under the radar. For instance, logins from known bad actor areas of the globe can now be blocked or flagged. We can prevent students from using their school email accounts in places that they are not safe for them to be using. These tools work together to provide layered defense, and more importantly, help us respond quickly and effectively in an ever-changing threat environment. And the third area is around school safety. We continue to put emphasis on school safety and making improvements that can improve our safety program. This summer, we have replaced some key cameras around the district, begin piloting cameras with analytics that help us identify and track students or users or people in our building more quickly, assisting our administrators in investigating incidents. We are also meeting with our local police over the summer and updating contacts, plans, and maintaining our strong relationships. This year, we are also working on implementing a substitute teacher guide that helps bring up these vital temporary staff on how to handle school safety incidents in our school instead of temporary staff. So we're looking for ways to basically close the gap and make sure that everyone can focus on teaching and learning and on our business.
Board members, please present to you the July Summer Education Report. Monday, July fourteenth, we wrapped up our fifth year of our specialized summer school program for students who need a higher level of support to be successful. These supportive summer school programs were entered from June second to July fourteenth here at Bremen High School. Thirty-minute students attended the six-week program and recouped over seventy semester credits towards graduation requirements. Many of these students were at risk for falling off track or not graduating, and they not participated in the program. Enrollment rate this year was slightly lower compared to previous years, but we credit that to the strong support and second chance learning opportunities students have in their home schools throughout the year. So it was a good thing. And then this past school year wrapped up the fifteenth year of the Excel program here at Bremen High School. As many of you know from attending the annual Excel Thanksgiving feast, one of the major focuses of the program is to prepare our students for life and after-school services through real-life opportunities to cook, shop, learn daily living skills like laundry and dishes. To celebrate Excel and all of your hard work, we did give the program a makeover this summer. The Excel Classroom Suite received a new stainless steel refrigerator, a new stove with double ovens, dishwasher, microwave, and washer and dryer. In addition, the classroom is getting new flooring. All the appliances were purchased with federal ID of grant monies, and we are excited for the students to have to see their new, precious space in August. That's all.
First board members, I wanted to let you know I did send out an email before the, before the meeting tonight. This email had the document that Ms. Gleason received at the board meeting with Rob Grossi, our treasurer. Just had some financial information, looking to the future, just some information that you might find helpful or useful if you'd like to discuss it further, or if you have any questions, you want to discuss, please, you know, we can definitely walk through that. Next, Mr. Towner and I will be meeting with our insurance committee tomorrow, so next month, we will have the final insurance renewal rates for our medical and dental. And then finally, July twenty-nine through thirty-first is our final Skyward Conference, that will be held at Oak Forest High School. We're looking forward to getting everyone finalized and feeling ready to start the next year. So far, the transition has gone extremely well, and this will be our last opportunity to have a Skyward trainer on-site that will be walking through various training topics and things like that.
Good evening, world personnel. I told you last month about the Indeed.com-sponsored job opening for paraprofessionals that we were, we were attempting. We opened it two weeks ago on July first, and even despite the July fourth holiday, we have thirty-eight applicants, which is pretty good numbers for parapros. You know, we'll be starting, Lisa's staff will be starting interviews fairly soon, so hopefully, what we're talking about is thirty-eight quality candidates for those positions. But really happy with the early return on our investment when it comes to that. I met with the associate principals, Dr. Boswell, last week, and we made a decision that we're going to spend a little bit more time on the student handbook this year than originally planned. And once we've got some work, the associates and I have some work to do, to sort of get things organized, and then what we'll do is open things up to some stakeholder input as well. So hopefully for, that'll be a twenty-five, twenty-six project. For next school year this time, we should be rolling in with a new, updated handbook. I've been meeting with a bunch of different vendors that are related to personnel. One that I have planned and I'm excited about is with Frontline Education, they handle all of our application software and things like that, that's coming up. There's some features, I was, I was speaking with one of my counterparts in a different district, and they have some other features that we don't, and I'm looking to potentially streamline that and make the application process a much better, sort of, you know, it's difficult going through the entire application process. We want to make it as easy as possible so that, once again, we can get quality candidates that are applying for jobs.
Well, board members, to piggyback off of Dr. Secora's initial remarks, we did receive some positive feedback regarding the light. Additionally, I did make my way to all of our municipalities last week and dropped off big stacks of them on, like, front tables and folders and whatnot, so residents can come and see them as they visit our municipalities. It's a project we're very proud of, and I'm very excited to do it every year. In addition to that, we are working on some back-to-school videos, so stay tuned for that. That should be out in the next couple of weeks, and we're really excited to start the school year.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here at Bremen High School, myself and Matt Meany decided that it would be appropriate for this month's board meeting to highlight our chief custodian, Eugene Reyna, who unfortunately was not able to join us tonight. But nonetheless, we wanted to highlight his work because although Dr. Secora said he's ready for summer to be over, we like to capture some of the magic that goes on behind the scenes when everyone is away for summer break. So Eugene is a product of District two twenty-eight, a graduate from Oak Forest High School. He's been with us for many years, and he takes great pride in our building all year long. But in the summertime, he especially puts in additional hours doing what I would consider passion projects. So oftentimes, myself or other team members in the building might have an idea, and we just kind of spitball ideas, and Eugene has never said no. Even if the idea is a little bit wild, a little bit crazy, we can share an idea with Eugene, and he brings it to life. So the first idea that he executed for us is swings in our courtyard. If you haven't been able to check out our courtyard space, it's incredible. Our kids love it. Our students for study hall, our tenth through twelfth graders that have a senior above in their classes are able to utilize this space when the weather is nice. It's, I mean, the best part of their day. My windows face out to the courtyard, Mr. Meany's doing a seat kids out there, sitting at picnic tables, playing the guitar, hanging out with friends, sitting by the pond area where we have resident duck families that come back every year. But we wanted to jazz it up a little bit with an area that kind of make it a little more serene where kids would want to hang out. So we mentioned putting swings out there, and at first, he was a little hesitant because he thought I meant a swing set. And I showed him one picture from Pinterest, and he said, oh, I can do that. I said, you can do that? He's like, oh, yeah, absolutely, I can do that. So not only does Eugene take on these projects, he spends time at home on the weekend, he goes and gets the supplies. Obviously, we fund it at school, the senior class actually funded the swings here. Even that bench area, Eugene put that in last summer, but the swings were the addition this year funded by the senior class. So he spends some time out there, doesn't miss a detail, as you can see, he originally puts them up, and he's kind of got a pea gravel surface down there to keep everything contained while he went above and beyond to expand that area, and he's got great vision. Our student workers, you'll see in this little part of the clip, we've got four student workers here throughout the summer that have been great, jumping in on projects. So they're out there laying down the mat and helping move rock around to really bring that area together. That's the kind of final project. See, one of our ducks in the background there, actually, is just kind of hanging out, we've got a fountain out there. But we're really, really excited, I'm sure if you follow us on social media, you'll see the kids out there hanging out. There was a post already that was shared, and the kids had lots of comments about how fire it is that we've got these swings. Our second project here, you can see this empty space, this is an old storage room in our main gym. So up in our main gym, it's a corner, cleaned it out, and it looks like a beautiful walk-in closet. I think it rivals what you would see on, you know, advertised by like your California closets, or people that turn to a lot of money to do these things. This space for us is going to be a space that we are going to use to provide necessities to our students that don't have them. So we have a lot of students where we're their safe space, and we kind of connect with kids at a different level, where it might be our counselors, our social workers, our mental health team, us as administrators, coaches, teachers, identify those students that need, it might be a hoodie, a winter jacket, gloves, it might be toiletries. And in the past, we've kind of, we've got bins, and we've got everything kind of organized and tucked away. But we have this vision for a space where a counselor or a social worker, an adult can take a student in there, in this private space that has, that will provide them some dignity and looks like this nice shiny new area, it will be fully stacked with any necessities that they might need. There's an area for them to try to step on, but we're trying to provide a space where kind of they can have a high level of experience to get those things that they do and feel like they're supported and taken care of here at Bremen High School. So I just want to thank Eugene, like I said, we mentioned an idea for this closet. Matt and I identified the space, and we said, here's what we're thinking, and I, he talked through the idea, he picked the cabinets, he went and got them, he came up with the vision. The last piece that you left, you're left there with, he actually carved that at home out of wood. And if you notice, it's kind of abstract, but hopefully you can all see, there's a B inside of there, and there's also a heart. So it's kind of an abstract little message towards the love that he has for Bremen High School and for our students. So, thank you, Eugene.
Mr. Whitcomb, since the last regular board meeting, we received the following Freedom of Information Act requests. Owen Wang from South Cook News requested a list of grad students in the past five school years, including fields, graduation years, names, hometown, gender. This request has been in the process. Owen Wang, South Cook News, asked, will the school, Matt Team, Fair High School, attend the annual July New Alpha-Data convention? So, who will be attending, and who is sponsoring the trip? This request has been processed. James Wooton requested a copy of the district superintendent contract, Tinley Park High School principal and assistant principals contracts, type drawdown record of donations and winnings, expense reports for Tinley Park High School Athletic Department and Activities, and principal expense reports for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five. This request has been processed. Thank you.
We, I met with the, our school treasurer, Rob Grossi's office. We have a new member on our board who represents the elementary district, South Island, and I don't remember the number. These, this new school district is a non-voting member of our board. Rob will be handling all of their funds and payrolls in order to let him know where the school is in Bremen Township. And they are paying the, the services, and we're happy to have another, as we know, great services in the town.
Item five point one, it's the bills, it's under the bills, if you roll into the bill.
Item five point one is the bills, the dungeon bills, the parole and T D O bills, instead of paper, in the full order. So moved.
Second, Mr. Pleason, second, Mr. Patterson, questions?
Hi, Mr. Patterson.
Hi.
Mrs. List, aye. Mr. Lot, aye. Mrs. Solis, aye.
Hi.
Hi.
Item five point two is FY twenty twenty-six, candidate budget, sending to the board for approval.
Second, Mr. Pleason, second, Mr. Patterson, questions? Your call.
Mrs. List, aye.
Mr. Patterson.
Hi.
Mrs. List, aye. Mr. Lot, aye. Mrs. Solis, aye.
Mr. Patterson.
Hi. Item five point three, item five point four, not words.
Thank you, Mr. Wickham. Item five point three are the twenty-five, twenty-six course additions for subject dot com and discussing the committee of the whole. The superintendent is recommending these six course additions for full board approval.
Second.
Second, Mr. Pleason. Remember this, that. Second, Mr. Pleason, questions? Your call, please.
Mr. Lot, aye. Mrs. Pleason, aye. Mrs. List, aye. Mr. Patterson.
Hi.
Mrs. Solis, aye.
Mr. Wickham.
Hi.
Item five point four is the overnight field trip request for the Tinley Park High School band. This will be over spring break, no loss of school days. The superintendent is recommending this overnight field trip for full board approval.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Mr. Patterson, questions? Your call.
Mr. Wickham.
Hi.
Mr. Patterson.
Hi.
Mrs. Pleason, aye. Mrs. List, aye. Mr. Lot, aye. Mrs. Solis, aye.
Item five point five, Townard.
Item five point five is the memo of understanding to add the asphyxiation program in the district. Item is being recommended for full board approval.
Second.
Second, Mrs. List, second, Mr. Patterson, questions? Your call.
Mrs. List, aye. Mrs. Pleason, aye. Mr. Lot, aye. Mr. Patterson.
Hi.
Mrs. Solis, aye.
Mr. Wickham.
Hi. Item five, six, ten, not words.
Item five point six are press policy updates I was given to discuss with the board's attorney this morning. I had a chance to review those in full, so both himself and myself are recommending the board to fully approve those changes as indicated in the board handbook.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Mr. Patterson, questions? Your call.
Mrs. Pleason, aye. Mr. Patterson.
Hi.
Mrs. List, aye. Mr. Lot, aye. Mrs. Solis, aye. Mr. Wickham.
Hi.
Item five point seven is our bi-annual closed session review. Closed session minutes are reviewed bi-annually to determine whether or not to keep these minutes close to the public. Audio recordings of closed session meetings eighteen months or older may be disposed of pending approval, pending approval of the Board of Education. It's my recommendation that all the closed session minutes remain close to the public, including the most recent minutes, February eleventh twenty-five, February eighteenth twenty-five, March eleventh twenty-five, March eighteenth twenty-five, April eighth twenty-five, May twentieth twenty-five, June tenth twenty-five, June seventeenth twenty-five, and July eighth twenty-five. It's also my recommendation that audio recordings eighteen months or older be disposed of, with the exception of any dates that may be held due to pending litigation.
So moved.
Mrs. Pleason, second, Mrs. List, questions? Your call.
Mrs. Pleason, aye. Mrs. List, aye. Mr. Lot, aye. Mrs. Patterson.
Hi.
Mrs. Solis, aye. Mr. Wickham.
Hi.
Item five point eight is our annual dues for the South Suburban Conference. As you may know, we are members of the South Suburban Conference along with seven other districts. The dues this year are twelve thousand five hundred per school. They are the same as last year, and this is for all of our competitive athletic and activity programs, and I'm recommending this item for full board.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Patterson, second, Mr. Lot, questions? Your call.
Mr. Patterson, aye. Mr. Lot, aye. Mrs. Pleason, aye. Mrs. List, aye. Mrs. Solis, aye. Mr. Wickham.
Hi.
Item five point nine is the twenty-five, twenty-six Scope dues. Scope is the South Cooperative Organization for College Education. This is the organization that keeps us up to date on legislation and give the updates on. They're also obviously our lobbying group, and I have the dues of three thousand dollars this year. I'm recommending this for full board.
So moved. Second.
Now moved by Mr. Pleason, second, Mr. Lot, any questions? Your call.
Mrs. Pleason, aye. Mr. Lot, aye. Mrs. List, aye. Mr. Patterson.
Hi.
Mrs. Solis, aye. Mr. Wickham.
Hi.
All right, my final item is five point ten, Board Administrator Travel Costs, Conferences. In February twenty seventeen, the Board of Education passed a resolution to revise board policy procedures regulating the universal travel, meal, lodging expenses for Congress and the Board and its employees. Following the requirements of this resolution, I am asking for full board approval for members of the Bremen District two twenty-eight Board and/or administrations to attend the following conferences: NSBA Council for Urban Boards of Education, known as Q, the COSB, the OSSBA Federal Advocacy Conference. Both of these conferences are held in September of twenty twenty-five, and the Illinois Association of School Boards Conference in November twenty twenty-five. I'm recommending this for full board.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Mr. Patterson, questions? Your call.
Mrs. Pleason, aye. Mr. Patterson.
Hi.
Mrs. List, aye. Mr. Lot, aye. Mrs. Solis, aye. Mr. Wickham.
Hi.
Item six, Personnel Recommendations, Mr. Townard.
Personnel recommendations, approval of administrative retirement contracts for Jacqueline Bergwald and Kimberly Spalding under retirement, Gail Richter, Edward Shadoroff, David Reed. Resignations, Natalie Harmoning, Tyler Brayville, and Sean Walsh. Medical leaves, Martina Brown, Sharon Smythe. And under employment, Jared Strick, Alicia Ali, John Bor, Carrie Groftka, Colleen Mancha, Gary Reyna, Kristen Gulich, Jacob Sladek, Araceli Martinez, Bridget Trump, Alison Querline, Dori Elmore, Cole Goodfellow, Helen Helikios, Don Olson, Carl Germain, Catherine Saja, and change in position, Gina Randage. All are being recommended for full board.
So moved. Second.
Second, Mrs. List, questions? Your call.
Mrs. Pleason, aye. Mrs. List, aye. Mr. Lot, aye. Mr. Patterson.
Hi.
Mrs. Solis, aye. Mr. Wickham.
Hi.
I would like to make a motion to include administrative employment contract with the superintendent as discussed in closed session.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Pleason, questions? Your call.
Mr. Wickham.
Hi.
Mrs. Pleason, aye. Mrs. List, aye. Mr. Lot, aye. Mr. Patterson.
Hi.
Mrs. Solis, aye.
I would like to make a motion to move to closed session to consider information regarding the purchase of lease of property or the use of public body, including meetings held in accordance with discussing whether to move to our session. Five ILCS, about twenty-seven, session two, seven.
So moved.
Uh, move by. Second, Mr. Patterson, your call, please.
Mrs. List, aye. Mr. Patterson.
Hi.
Mrs. Solis, aye. Mr. Wickham.
Hi.
To the regular business meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Mr. Patterson, your call, please.
Mrs. Pleason, aye. Mrs. Lot, aye. Mrs. List, aye. Mr. Patterson.
Hi.
Mrs. Solis, aye. Mr. Wickham.
Hi.
Announcements are as follows. The next committee of the whole meeting is Tuesday, August twelfth, six forty-five PM, Hillcrest High School. The next regular board meeting is Tuesday, August nineteenth, seven PM, at Hillcrest High School. I get a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second, Mrs. Lot, all those in favor?
Aye.